Okay, Madam Secretary, please note that all council members are here and therefore I'll call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome all citizens who are here tonight to be with us during this meeting. You're always welcome and you're always invited to speak at the appropriate time. We want to go on now to communication items from council.
I'd like to pull D four, please.
I'd like to pull D two. Okay, any other items from council?
I have one. I just wondered if Mr. Leesack could just give us an update on the holiday waste collection schedule?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mr. Bocknight. Wanted to get up here and just take a chance to talk about it. We've got two holidays coming up that we do not pick up garbage on, which is Wednesday, Christmas Day, December 25th, and January 1st. And so we did have to change the pickup schedule up. So, we don't pick up garbage on Wednesday, so your garbage days will be your normal garbage days. Nothing changes there. But it's very important for the citizens who have their garbage pickup, I'm sorry, their recycling pickup on Wednesday, or their yard waste pickup on Wednesday, December 25th. That will be picked up this Saturday on the 21st. So we're picking it up early. So I wanted to make sure that we got in front of people to let them know. On January 1st, if your recycle day is January 1st, or your yard waste day is January 1st, it will be picked up January 4th. And the reason that we have that split in there is I want to remind the citizens that we pick up extra trash. This is the one time of year that we do it. It can be in regular trash cans, boxes, bags. Please have it bundled in some way, shape, or form. But starting January 26th, on your regular garbage day, we'll pick up extra trash through...
December 26th.
December 26th. I'm sorry. December 26th through December 31st. So that gets everybody that one pickup to put your extra trash out there. So we'll keep it five feet from your cart. We'll pick up your cart. A second rear loader will come by to pick up the extra trash. And then, of course, you can call our office, 361-485-3220, if you've got any questions on these. And they'll be in the newspaper and on the TV as well.
On the website as well?
On the website as well. Yes, sir, they're already loaded on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items from council before we go into recognizing those who have served on some of our city boards and commissions?
April.
She's hiding.
Didn't see her up there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are a few individuals that we would like to present plaques to in appreciation of their service on a board or commission. The first individual that we would like to recognize is Dr. Peter Reese. And Dr. Reese began serving on the Food Establishment Appeals Board in 2003, and his final appointment expired in September of this year. The city does appreciate your willingness to serve your community, sir, and presents you with this plaque in appreciation of your time and service. The next individual to be recognized is Dr. John McNeil. Dr. McNeil was appointed to the Board of Health in 2013, and his appointment expired in April of this year. And the city does appreciate his willingness to serve his community as well. Former Councilman Tom Halapaska is being recognized for his service to the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Board of Directors. He served from 2010 until May of this year. And the city also appreciates your willingness to serve your community, sir. Council and staff would also like to recognize Mr. Louis Knight. Mr. Knight served on the Victoria Sales Tax Board of Directors from 2006 and completes his appointment at the end of this year. And the city does appreciate your willingness to serve your community, sir. And we would also like to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Josephine Solis for her service to Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Board of Directors. She's served since 2013, and her appointment will expire at the end of this year. We do have one individual that was not able to attend tonight, but Eric Mercer will be awarded a plaque as well in recognition of his service on the Building and Standards Commission from 2014 until January 1st of 2020. Thank you all very much.
Thank you each and every one of you for many of your years of service. Moving on, if there's no other items from council, we'll go into citizens' communication. I would ask that if any citizens here are to speak of matters on the public hearings, if you would please reserve your time to that section of the meeting. So we invite anybody to step up to the mic at this time that has anything to say to And for five minutes.
All right, thank you. Hello, I'm Jenny Stafford. Live at 210 Weirdon, work at Midcoast Family Services. And I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about Midcoast Family Services, and I want to give you a little brief history. And I'm sure that's not exactly what you had on your mind when you came to a meeting tonight, but I've got a reason, and I'll get there in a minute. But Midcoast Family Services was created in the early 1990s, and it was created as an agency to prevent and intervene on situations of substance abuse. The name was not Midcoast Family Services, but it was Midcoast Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. Those services continued on until 1999, when we merged with the Women's Crisis Center, and the name was changed to better reflect the larger services that we were providing. That's when we became Midcoast Family Services. We continued for several years just doing those two main things until 2004, when somebody from city planning called me and said, "Hey, I know about this HUD grant. Are you interested?" And I wrote my first HUD grant as a chief operations officer, and in 2005, we began providing homeless services. So you can see, we've kind of evolved through the years. In 2012, we picked up Sexual Assault Prevention and Intervention Services for Adults, when another nonprofit in town gave up that service. And then again, in this last year, in 2019, we picked up another service, and that was Child Abuse Prevention, when the Star Family Services contract was up, and they wanted somebody in Victoria to handle it, and we gladly took it because it's so well-aligned with our mission and our purpose. The reason I'm telling you all this is because I have been talking to somebody at the county level and have heard that there's perhaps some funding opportunities available through the Child Safety Fund that the county is entertaining and hopefully that the city will participate in. There are several things that that fund can support: crossing guards, if you have paid crossing guards; our services that support child abuse prevention; our drug and alcohol prevention. We do that, and I want to throw our hat in the ring while I can. Every single day, we are working with entire schools, doing school assemblies, we're doing classroom presentations, we're doing whole grade levels. We work with small groups of kids who are at risk. We work with individual kids. We see lots and lots of kids. We're at every school campus in Victoria. We have a presence at elementary through high schools. And so we want to be part of that equation if and when the city decides that they want to launch that. We're so interested in that. It's something that we believe in. I've been certified prevention specialist since it was first offered, and I continue to maintain that certification because I believe prevention works. And I think if you ask any firefighter here, they'd much rather prevent a fire than try to put it out. We'd much rather prevent drug use than try to deal with an addiction. So I'm standing here with my hand out, like I do so many times before, which leads me into my next comment. First of all, I have to say, Councilman Lockren, you have given me something to think about. I don't know if you remember at breakfast, United Way breakfast a few months ago, you said something to me about the camping ordinance. You said you voted for that camping ordinance because I said it didn't matter. That flip comment that I made has haunted me a lot since I said it, because it did matter. While it may not physically have mattered, because there was one individual, he was actually in the problem there, why it mattered is because it became, a lot of our homeless people became targets. We heard people that were being yelled at, they were being told they couldn't sit on bus benches, they couldn't have their stuff at public places, they were being harassed a lot. And for those individuals, they felt more of a target than they had ever been. I was so wrong about that it didn't matter, because it did. And I believe this was one of those things that you never intended to happen. I don't believe you'd intended for them to become targets, but it happened. It was an unintended consequence, and I have a feeling that there's another one of those looming out there as well. And that's the sign that I've heard tossed about, the sign that says, "Please don't give to panhandlers," which, by the way, I think is a terrible word. I think we ought to just call them our neighbors. But when you read a sign like that, you have to think of what it's saying in between the lines, which is, "Don't help the needy. Don't help these poor people. Give your money somewhere else, but don't help the poorest of the poor." Today, even though it was so terribly cold, I walked down to the square, De Leon Plaza, because I wanted to see if that sign was still there, and it is. And my Spanish teacher from college is going to just croak when he hears me say this, but it says, "La calle de los dias amigos." This city was built by ten friends who believed they could put their brains together, they could put their resources together, and they could methodically and thoughtfully and systematically come up with a plan to make Victoria a great place. That sign is a testament that that happened, but let's not quit doing that. Let's keep doing that. Let that sign be our marker, and not a sign on the street corner that's going to be a problem for people that are standing there, as well as a problem for people who pass by. I think that's a legacy that we would all be proud of, and I just urge you to reconsider any kind of verbiage that would discourage people from helping the needy. I'm going to leave, if it's okay, a little fact sheet about some of our prevention services for you to look at, just at your leisure. Can I leave it with you, and you'll pass it out later? If you would like to know anything about this ordinance or the Child Safety Fund in municipalities, I'll be happy to talk to you about that later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from citizens? Hearing none, we'll move into public hearings.
Item C1 on our agenda is an ordinance amending a variance from Section 14-10B of Victoria City Code, which prohibits the sale of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a church, school, public hospital, or childcare facility to Christine Cheyenne for a restaurant to be located at 3402 Houston Highway, providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
Have a comment from staff on that?
Yes, I have a brief presentation. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm here to speak about the liquor license variance request that we received for 3402 Houston Highway. City Code Section 1410 defines what a church, public hospital, school, and childcare facility is in reference to the section of the code concerning the sale of alcoholic beverages. The request for a variance to sell alcoholic beverages at 3402 Houston Highway is necessary due to its proximity to a childcare facility located at 3401 Houston Highway. The City Code references Section 42.002 of the Texas Human Resources Code and defines a childcare facility and daycare facility. I have verified that the childcare facility located across the street from 3402 Houston Highway is currently licensed and meets the definition as stated in the Texas Human Resources Section 14-10 of the City Code does not allow for the sale of alcohol within 300 feet of a church, public hospital, school, or childcare facility. The section also defines how the measurements are performed. The first step in requesting a permit to sell alcohol requires that the requestor completes the appropriate Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission application and present it to the city secretary's office to be signed to ensure the compliance with the local codes related to the sale of alcohol. My office does rely on development services to perform those measurements for us. This was how this was first brought to our attention. When we requested the measurement be done for 3402 Houston Highway, we were made aware that it was too close to a childcare facility. This is the measurement that was done. The stamp indicates the measurement done for 3402 Houston Highway, and the restaurant and daycare facility are approximately 100 feet apart, but are separated by a major thoroughfare. The childcare facility was notified of this request for variance. As stated in the packet, property owner Dorothy Ramirez has requested a variance for the property. Ms. Ramirez wishes to lease the property to Christine Cheyenne, doing business as Christine's Ocean Seafood and Grill. The variance, as read by city attorney Gush, does condition that the variance only be allowed so that Ms. Yen has the right to sell alcohol at that location. Prior to City Code change in October of 2016, to include the prohibition of selling alcohol near a childcare facility, this location qualified to sell alcohol. And as written in the letter that Ms. Ramirez mentioned, that it has been several other businesses that sold alcohol in the past. It's just that 2016 change that caught it this time. This variance request is slightly different than others that you see. A variance for a liquor license should be thought of as an exception to the regulations of the City Code. The process for applying for a variance such as a driveway, or a setback, or water wells is specified in the City Code and gives the council the right to do that with a resolution. The process for applying for variance to Section 1410 is not specified, so therefore the individual must request the variance from council, and an ordinance is required to allow for that variance. Applicants requesting a variance to obtain a liquor license are asked to write a letter to council requesting the variance, and then a staff member presents the variance to council, and the requestor may state their case during the public hearing. I have invited Ms. Ramirez, as well as Ms. Yen, to speak during the public comment period on this ordinance if they wish. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to.
Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this matter now. Anyone here to speak to this matter? Please step forward.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Ann Craiger Ramirez. I get emotional, so I can't talk. In 1986, I built the building. I wanted to cook Mexican food with margaritas. And I did, till today. I have settled all of Victoria, pleased a lot of people, and now I'm at my wit's end because now the city says I can't sell alcohol. I was there since 1986. There's like five lanes of highway going both ways on 59. We've never even seen a child across the street. They've never even been there. Why do we have to have a law like that? Why, I want to know? They didn't tell me that when I built my restaurant. If they had told us, maybe we wouldn't have built a restaurant. Everybody that eats Mexican food likes to eat a margarita, drink a margarita. You're limiting my motive of making my living for the rest of my life. I had so many things to say, but... The city attorney has assured me that he's going to let Ms. Yen work on this variance so she can sell her thing. But what about if she doesn't stay her term? What am I going to do after that? I have no other desire to do anything else with the building. I wish I could talk without crying. I opened another entrance on Red River so that if anybody drank more than one or two margaritas, they could go out the back way. I controlled that because I was there, or I controlled with my renters that were there. And now this law is there. How can we change it? Can we change it? And will you please change it? I don't want just the variance for her, because if she changes her mind, what am I going to do next year? I plan to retire with that money from the rental of that business. And now, my hands are tied. They're not tied in the back, but they are tied. When I built the restaurant in 1985, it was just forest up there. I had to cut the weasest trees and whiskey trees and Morgan buildings that were there. I had to move them all and build according to the city. And I did. And I've lived a good life, and I've enjoyed my building. I've kept it up. And now, y'all want to tie my hands. It's not right.
Ms. Ramirez, we thank you for coming up and speaking, and we will deal with this when we deliberate on it.
Will you please?
So, that's sort of the process.
Thank you. I've been in Victoria since 1942.
Yes, ma'am.
And my dad built Victoria since 1946. We've been working here. We started with Zarski and them. We're old timers, and we know. We've seen this city grow. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this matter in the public hearing?
Hi, my name is Christine. Also, I just want to be open, but before I get that, my English is not good, but I try. Also, like, before I see that building, I just go in with Dottie, go and look that building. We see the bar in there, and I don't think about where I check up there. But until I do something with her, say, "Okay, I took it," everything. But I come to the city office to sign out, because I put newspaper, everything, and to the courthouse, they sign all that stuff, and go to the city, and they say, "They cannot sign that." I had to look at the place before I signed that. Then after one day, she called me, say, "Oh, you have childcare on the front." And I said, "No, we don't have childcare on the front." She said, "Yeah, you do." "How? How have childcare?" Then I'm in Houston. Then I say, "Okay, let me go down there." I drive from Houston back to over there. I come to the store, I look at the front, oh my God. I see the big sign, "A childcare on the front." And I say, "Wow." And I ask my daughter, I say, "Have you seen that childcare before when we come in?" "No." And the one, our friend, Joe, I think, Joe something, his name? Joe Bray, whatever? And he said, "I don't see that either." And my husband, he tried to clean up outside the front, right? He heard the child scream. He, in the matching, he don't know the childcare front. He thought a goat hunting. He's like, "Wow, I can sit here like my chili. It's like a goat in the front of our store and hurt all the children." And he comes to the store, he don't want to tell me, because like, every time he walk to the building, he feel like somebody walk behind him, even my worker one. They say, "Some people hunting me. When you not here, people come in the back me and hide around." I say, "Are you kidding me? All you need to do, just ask Jesus out there, and they go away." That's what I believe. And also, every time when I'm not there, they don't want to stay in the building. That's why, and all I need to do, that's why I asked Dottie, say, "You know what? They have childcare on the front. We cannot sell wine or beer." And Dottie say, "You can sell liquid." I know, I don't want liquid, hot liquor. All I need to do, just wine and beer, just have the customer happy, and if they frozen margarita, that's all I need to do. I don't want to sell hot liquid at all. But can you think about that? Maybe I can open that. That way, I can keep the building, because I signed with her for one year. After that, and I buy the building. Not that I'm going to do, but when the business not going on, but I cannot buy it. Just think about that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Is there anyone else to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add just one piece of information for council's consideration, this is a unique variance request, because the person who is requesting to sell alcohol is not the same person who owns the property. And so part of the reason you see it worded the way that it is, is because Ms. Ramirez owns the property, but Ms. Yen has actually applied for the alcohol permit for TABC. So if you grant this variance, what you are granting is Ms. Yen permission to get a permit from TABC to sell alcohol, even though she doesn't own the property.
I move to accept item C1.
I second. And moved and seconded to accept item C1. Any discussion?
I just think it's a grandfather's side.
Yeah.
That's how I review it.
I think under the circumstances, it's...
It's a grandfather's decision.
It's grandfather.
Yep.
Right.
I mean, not technically, but that's how I approach it.
Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving item C1, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Item C2 is an ordinance amending Chapters 5, 12, and 21 of the Victoria City Code to create design districts within specific designated areas of the city to raise the standards and quality of development in these areas, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Do you have a...
Yes. Once again, we're here to talk about the Placido Benavides Design District. So as you remember, this design district came about because of our capital improvement project, which is a $9.2 million project to extend Placido Benavides Drive. And the purpose is to create an area that has a more aesthetically pleasing area of Victoria and has higher standards when it comes to development regulations. So this is the proposed Placido Benavides Design District. You will see in blue is the Placido Benavides Drive extension. The hatched yellow line is the proposed Ball Airport extension, that future Ball Airport extension. And it's approximately a little over 1,000 acres that you will find in the red boundary of the proposed district. So the purpose or the regulations are meant to foster a more improved aesthetic in the area, and we have a few regulations that will help with that goal. Private utilities are required to be underground. There will be streetlights that are specific to this area. Our off-street storage requirements are a little bit more restrictive in this area as well. We also have a tiny bit more landscaping that is required. Manufactured homes and industrialized housings would be prohibited in the design district. And then, we have additional regulations for signs. So billboards are prohibited, and then all freestanding signs shall be monument-style signs. To help illustrate what that could look like, this is an existing area in town. You're looking in north Navarro towards Loop 463. So if we could somehow eliminate all of the power poles, and then bring all the signs down to monument-style signs, this is potentially what an area could look like.
Flagpoles?
Flagpoles are not regulated by the sign ordinance, so flagpoles would be allowed. This is John Stockbauer. It's just so easy with Photoshop.
What's the definition of ground cover in the public right of way?
Grass.
Just grass, yeah.
Grass meets that definition. You can, of course, plant other sorts of decorative vegetation, like Asian jasmine or whatnot, but grass would meet that definition. And this is also looking at north on... And this is also looking at north, on north Navarro, near the Toyota dealership. So of course, we talked to council about this back in November. The considerations and next step were to schedule a public hearing and ordinance amendment, which is tonight. We did notify the property owners. Notification letters were mailed on November fifteenth to give property owners a full month notice. And we also, with Mr. Brocknight's request to put the images on our website, we did create a webpage that included the PowerPoint plus all of the regulations and advertised that webpage on our main page with a rotator that was published on December second. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll now open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone here to speak to this matter, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to adopt C two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item C two. Any discussion?
This is just gonna be on that red district that you've got on there off of Placido Benavides, right? Okay. So back when in November, we had just talked about it, we had not done any type of ordinance yet. This is the first ordinance that we were doing. Okay. I guess because we had talked about Placido Benavides so much, I thought we had done it and I'm like, we're doing it again. Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of item C two?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item C three is a public hearing on the twenty eighteen Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the period from October first, twenty eighteen through September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Mayor and members of council, this is a public hearing only. There is no action required for this, for this agenda item.
Good evening again. So this is just a quick, one-page summary of that multi-page document that you found in our packet. But what we are required to provide HUD every year at the end of the year is our CAPER, which is a report of what the activities we did and our, that we said we were gonna do in our annual action plan. So if you remember, every August, we approve an annual action plan and that controls that fiscal year. And then following December, after we have completed out that action plan, we provide this report to HUD. So this is a summary of what we, of these activities that we did. The Mortgage Assistant Program was a program activity where we said we were going to assist for first-time homebuyers. We assisted too in fiscal year nineteen. We have five thousand dollars remaining in that program and that program will remain open until we expend all of those funds. Our demolition program, we demolished nine substandard structures. Or we said we were gonna demolish nine, we actually demolished eleven. We still have thirty, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars remaining. And so that program will remain open until we expend all of those funds. We had a public improvement project for Hopkins Park, which included installing eleven lights for picnic tables and a swing set. That project has been completed and we are finalizing the paperwork for reimbursement for HUD. So that program will close. Another public improvement program was the Transit Shelters, where we plan to build three transit shelters. That program is currently being, the shelters are currently in the bidding process. And so we have thirty-five thousand dollars remaining and that program will remain open until we expend those funds. And the third public improvement project is the sidewalk along North Azalea and East San Antonio Street, which is part of the Stoll Street Project. We have not yet began to build that project and so that project will remain open and has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allotted to it. Our Utility Assistance Program with Community Action Agency said we are going to assist two hundred and ninety-eight low to moderate income persons. And we actually assisted three hundred and thirty-six low to moderate income persons and that program has been closed out. Our Gulf Ben Wellness Service said we are going to assist three low to moderate income disabled persons. And we did that and the program is now closed out. The ISD Kids Connection said we are going to assist sixty-five low to moderate income homeless students. We did that and with the savings of a hundred and six dollars. So that program is gonna be closed out, but that hundred and six dollars will be available to be reprogrammed into future action plans. Our Mid Coast, our Faith Family and Salvation Services and Mid Coast Eviction Prevention Program. So we were, our goal was to assist ninety-two low to moderate income persons and we assisted a hundred and thirty-two low to moderate income persons. So that program has been closed out. For CASA, we proposed to assist forty-five low to moderate income homeless students and we completed that goal with a savings of eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which can be reprogrammed into future action plans. For Meals on Wheels, we assisted twenty-two low to moderate income people. Are we, our goal was to, we actually assisted thirty, so that program's been closed out. The YMCA Pool Project was actually an added project when we amended our plan this last summer. And so that program is still underway and will not be closed out until we finish the project. And then we did stay under our twenty percent administration cap. We actually expended ninety-one thousand dollars. So we have about eighteen, or nineteen thousand remaining that can be reprogrammed into future action plans. So this consolidates what that large plan in your packet says and we will be sending that on to HUD once the public hearing period closes at the end of the month.
Thank you very much.
Julia, I have a question. Go back to that page. The reprogramming can be used for anything, but the ones, the programs that are open, when you take them to like to this year or nineteen or twenty, you're still gonna have them under that category, right?
Yes, ma'am. Until that category or that function closes out and we finish it. And then if it comes in under budget, we would have additional money to reprogram.
And these figures are in addition to what we're gonna get programmed this year? You're gonna add that to it and keep it open and go forward?
Yes, ma'am. We try and always add in the reprogram money first and, and budget that first because of there's a timeliness issue of HUD wanting us to spend money in first, money out.
Okay, the only thing is on the program administration, the difference that's left over, does that get programmed into administration or just reprogrammed into the whole thing again?
It gets reprogrammed into the whole thing, but every annual action plan has that twenty percent cap and then fifteen percent on public services. So it goes into the pot of money, but out of that new pot, we still have a cap that we have to buy by.
Each year stands alone?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, the questions or comments? Thank you. Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wishes to comment on this report, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
That takes us to the consent agenda. There are four items remaining on the consent agenda tonight that'll be approved by a single vote. They are first, D one, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of December third, twenty nineteen. Item D three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents for the annual water system fee for the city's public water system and declaring an effective date. Item D five, which is a resolution awarding the fiscal year twenty twenty mill, excuse me, street mill and overlay repair project to Brandon Paving Company Limited in the amount of two hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. And then item D six is a resolution awarding the fiscal year twenty twenty Crack Seal Project to Four B Paving Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept as consent agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Item D two is an ordinance granting to Victoria Electric Cooperative Incorporated the right privilege and franchise to utilize the city of Victoria's public right-of-way for broadband internet services facilities. To provide such services, providing for payment of a fee to charge for the use of the public right-of-way, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So moved?
Second.
Mayor and council, I would like to clarify because I know there was some initial confusion. This was initially posted as a second and third reading, but this is second reading only of this ordinance. There will be a third reading at a later date.
Been moved and seconded to accept item D two and I will open it up for discussion.
Thomas, could you read the first, number one of the ordinance?
Certainly, certainly. This is paragraph number one of the ordinance and it reads, "Victoria, Texas, here and after called the city, hereby grants to Victoria Electric Cooperative Incorporated, a Texas Electric Cooperative Corporation, here and after called V E C or Cooperative, its successors and assigns, consent to use and occupy the present and future streets, alleys, highways, and public thoroughfares here and after referred to as public rights-of-way, for the purpose of erecting, maintaining, constructing, extending, repairing, protecting, operating, and replacing therein and thereon, a system of poles, pole lines, towers, wires, guys, cables, conduits, transformers, pedestals, and other facilities and appurtenances necessary or proper for the transmission and distribution of broadband internet service, otherwise known as broadband facilities. This franchise is granted for a term of ten years from and after the effective date of this ordinance."
My question is, do right-of-ways include easements? And are they different or clarify what they are for me?
Easements are different from rights-of-way. A rights-of-way, a right-of-way typically includes streets and sidewalks. An easement is a much broader grant of access across someone's property. You could say that a right-of-way is one type of easement, but utility easements are another type and an easement can be granted for other purposes as well, such as an access easement or a cross-access easement that are similar to rights-of-way. But no, they're not quite the same thing.
Can I also add too that typically rights-of-way equates to ownership? Direct ownership from us?
It is.
At the city for the most part, as opposed, as opposed to an easement typically not always equates to direct ownership.
An easement is not ownership of the underlying fee simple. It is only a right to use the property. A right-of-way may or may not include ownership of a fee simple.
In this ordinance, can they use easements?
I don't know that I have a very definitive answer to that question for you because of the various types of easements that might exist. For example, when a developer sets a development, a subdivision on the, on the ground and files that plat, that plat might say that the easement within the neighborhood is dedicated to the public for the use of utilities. It might be a very broad easement like that, in which case V E C likely could use that easement. I'm only gonna say likely because I'm a lawyer and I'm gonna reserve the right to, to look at the details before giving a definitive answer. However, there are certainly going to be other easements around town that do not have such a broad definition and in which V E C would not be able to. So it's a very fact-based question and that's why, I'm sorry, it sounds like I'm hedging, but it's very difficult to answer that question in a hypothetical.
Well, the way I read this is, now, if V E C is gonna put in internet service, they, they can either use existing poles from A E P or their own poles, or they can put in more poles. So now maybe the market, CPNL will say, or A E P will say, yeah, we want the money and they'll go for it. But this also gives them the right to put a separate set of poles in. So, and which means they could put poles in a neighborhood where there's already poles on the other side of the street. I just want everybody to understand that. The other thing is, if you have underground utilities, unless you're in the design district, they could put poles on your, on your, a right-of-way in front of your house. Is that not correct?
That's, that's partially correct. There are some areas of our town, and Julie may be able to give a more definitive answer on this point, but some areas of our town where new residential neighborhoods are established, we do have undergrounding requirements in those neighborhoods as well. But for the neighborhoods that currently have above-ground utilities, then you're right. This would grant V E C the right to go in and plant additional poles within the rights-of-way.
The agreement we have with A E P, we, we are paying to use some A E P poles. Am I not correct?
I believe that's still correct. I know it has been historically.
Can it be in future franchise agreements and this one, for example, that if the city needs to use poles that are part of a franchise agreement, that we shouldn't have to pay to use them?
That is certainly a term that we could seek to include in a franchise ordinance. Franchise ordinance are typically negotiated agreements similar to a contract. And so I can't speak to the willingness of the other party, but it is certainly something that we could seek to include.
How much, do you know how much we pay for, pay CPNL for?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I could find out before the third reading.
I would be curious. We shouldn't be paying CPNL to use their, use their poles. I, I would like something in all future franchise agreements where the city doesn't have to pay to use poles that are part of a franchise agreement.
Now, I'm trying to understand where you're going with that because if the utility company puts in the infrastructure and pays us for the right to use that infrastructure, why are you saying that you think the city should have a right to use that infrastructure that a private industry?
Because if they want the franchise agreement, they'll agree to it.
Okay.
Basically.
I know, I wanted to understand where you were coming from.
I believe it's eighteen thousand dollars we pay CPNL. That was, somebody threw that number out to me and that's, I don't think we should be paying eighteen thousand to run a network, lines down their poles. And if this comes up in the future, I don't want to be paying a franchise to run some wires for the city.
Well, further in the agreement, doesn't it state that they have to abide by all ordinances and rules of the city?
Yes, it does.
So that's another mechanism in the future that we can strengthen our ordinances to control poles and things like that as well.
Yeah, that's correct. If we were to include regulations in our ordinance to further limit the placement of poles, et cetera, they would need to comply with that regulation.
Which might be a, an easier way to deal with it on a case-by-case basis than just a blanket.
Sure.
Rule that ends up with something we just dealt with that's kind of unintended. So we always have that tool at our disposal, correct?
That's correct.
So as we get into this agreement, it's gonna be a while before they start doing anything. And so we, maybe we study it and, and if, if there's concern on council that we, that we address it in that manner.
I have one other question.
Sure.
They have existing poles, which they run their electricity on. If they put in new poles for, this franchise agreement is for cable, can they run their electric lines on it?
They, V E C already has a franchise agreement for electrical services within their area of town. If they want to plant a new pole in the city's right-of-way for the purpose of running electricity, that would be under their electricity franchise agreement, not under this agreement. If they want to plant a pole to serve both internet and electricity, if I can just extend your, your question.
Right.
Then it would arguably be under both of these agreements.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any further discussion? Item number?
This is item D two.
On D two, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of item D two, say so.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Item D four is a resolution awarding the fiscal year Crack Seal Project in Fleetwood, Cherokee Hills, Hillcrest, Oak Haven, Parkstone, Regency, and Meadows subdivisions to Brandon Paving Company Limited for their low bid of one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept item D four. Any discussion?
Yes. Are we using the new plans that we came up with or are we still going with the old way of bidding? The bidding process is what I'm asking.
Sure, on the, on the bidding process, council.
That we use for this particular.
Yes, this was an invitation-to-bid type of process, which is what we have used in the, in the past. Legal and, and purchasing are still working out all the details on the new processes. And I think Mr. Gush should probably speak a little bit more to that.
Absolutely. If you're interested on where we stand on that existing project, we have retained outside special counsel who specializes in construction law and procurement. His name is Jeff Chapman out of the city of Austin. And he is currently reviewing our existing procurement documents. He has suggested some changes and we are scheduling a meeting that should happen sometime in the first or second week of January for him to come down and meet with all of the relevant departments that use those documents, for us to all get on the same page about what our goals are in seeing some revised new documents. Our goal will be to craft entirely new, updated documents that are more similar to what are being used in other cities so that those companies that are bidding on our projects will be looking at documents similar to what they're seeing in other cities. It should make a more streamlined process. It should make a more streamlined process.
Okay.
So, just to add to that, there, there are certain projects that, that, that we felt we needed to go ahead and get on the books and get scheduled before the contractors got busy, and, and, uh, these three that are on council tonight are some of those.
Okay. On that process, the new process, um, is there a minimum that, you know, has to go for the three bids and things like that, or, 'cause I know, you know, the, the city manager can approve up to fifty thousand dollars, so, uh, and are those projects that are between fifty and, say, two hundred thousand dollars, are they bid out? And also, what is the cap that, that wasn't the question, it was the bidding? And then also, yeah, like a minimum, like, okay, from here to here, you know, he has to...
I think, I, I think the quick answer is that anything above fifty thousand dollars is bid out in once, in some capacity.
Okay.
Uh, we brought to council, uh, resolution, I believe it was, that grants me the authority to kinda make the decision on which process to follow, because in some cases, it would make sense to, you know, do the traditional low bid, in other cases, it's something different. There is no scenario, or there shouldn't be at least, where an amount above fifty thousand dollars is not procured in some way, shape, or form.
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Ms. Leece, I think also your question goes to that range between zero and fifty thousand dollars, and those, uh, contracts are subject to the local procurement manual that the city has adopted, and there are standards in that procurement manual where three bids are required, or the department is required to seat three bids. I, I shouldn't use the word bid, quotes, they're not formal bids, all right? But that's an internal process, um, and it's established through the finance department and their purchasing department, um, and for, and, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head what the minimum threshold is where you have to start getting three bids, I think it's twenty-five hundred dollars, but I, we could certainly check on that and get you more specific information.
Okay. Just wanted to find out. Thank you.
Ms. Therese?
Yes?
We've had a lot of discussion up here about seal codes and road maintenance. Can you tell us, uh, a little bit about the Onyx application for, uh, our public?
Okay, so sure, I have a, I have a, a short presentation that really doesn't get into a whole lot about the Onyx, but I, I can specifically talk about that during the presentation. So, as, uh, as, as council is aware, historically, we've done a double seal, uh, in, in the past, and that double seal's had a lot of problems. It, it, it bleeds when it gets too hot, there's a lot of shelling that goes on, and it fades over time. With this Onyx prod, uh, product, uh, that we used in the Northcrest area last year, uh, the, uh, the rock, the seal that goes down is just a single seal, and you come back with a grade-five trap rock, which is already a dark color, and then on top of that, you come in and you put the Onyx product, which is a, uh, kind of a ceramic base asphalt, and you do that, that coat twice, and that, uh, that product, uh, actually lasts quite a bit longer. If you were to drive out to, uh, Northcrest now, uh, that product looks the exact same color now as it did when we put it down in the summer, and it's done a fabulous job.
The resident satisfaction was higher?
Much higher, much higher. We had much less shelling, uh, matter of fact, uh, in this particular contract, we've actually brought in a vacuum broom in addition to the rotor broom that we normally do. So after they, uh, put the product down, or put the seal down, and put the rock on top of it, we'll give that, uh, rock a little time to set in, then we'll come in behind it, and we'll vacuum broom up any loose rock before we apply the, uh, the Onyx product. But, just so that, uh, council is, is familiarized, and, and the general public is also up to date, the seal code is a maintenance product, I mean, is a maintenance project, uh, it's an activity designed to, uh, to keep our good streets good, uh, so that they don't fall in disrepair like we've seen in the past. And so typically, we aim this type of activity at streets that fall in that, that street rating of, uh, in the nineties. So this year, we're looking at Cherokee Hills, Hillcrest subdivision, which is a ninety-three, Fleetwood, which is again a ninety-three, Parkstone subdivision, which is a ninety-seven, but again, that's following that plan where we try to do a seal every few years so that we don't fall into, we don't have streets that fall into disrepair again. Oak Haven subdivision is again a ninety-seven, but it's on the schedule and needs to be done. The Meadow subdivision, which is a ninety-four, and the Regency subdivision, which is a ninety-five. So those are the sub, those are the subdivisions we're gonna hit this year, and, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a quick question. Who did the Northcrest? I was told it was a very good job.
Uh, Brandon did the, uh, Northcrest subdivision, and, uh, Brandon is the, is the primary contractor. They come in, they do all the level-up work before the subcontractor comes in. The actual contractor does the Onyx work is a, is a company called Clark. And, and they did, they did a very good job. Excited to have them back.
They're out of San Antonio.
Yes.
Any further questions? Any further discussion of item, uh, D four? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, that takes us to item E one, which is a resolution appointing or reappointing seven members to the Building and Standards Commission and declaring an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
Been a motion, a second for item E one. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Oh, he wanted to have a name on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, I'm sorry. Rach, Ms. Gilbert, would you like to give a presentation on that?
We gave the presentation at the last meeting, but there is a blank in that resolution that needs to be filled in. There was one application received from Matt Stewart.
Need to include the name.
Absolutely. And so, go ahead.
I move that we accept E one with the name of Matt Stewart.
E one?
Second. That's E one.
Okay, so now we have a resolution in front of us, thank you, mayor and council, to adopt item E one with the name Matt Stewart in the blank, so that we are ready to proceed.
So you're having amendment to your first motion?
I'm sorry.
Let's vote on the amendment first, all those in favor of the amendment. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and we'll vote on the...
On the motion as amended.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the voting on the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And we officially have that filled.
Thank you, I, I officially made that more complicated than it needed to be. I apologize for that. All right, so item E two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement with Berkeley Life and Health Insurance Company for specific stop-loss insurance in an estimated amount not to exceed six-hundred-and-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, and declaring an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second to accept item E two, any discussion on that matter? You gonna give a report?
Yeah, good evening, mayor and members of council, thank you. I just would like to say, uh, that we're bringing this forward. Um, I know it's a little unorthodox with regards to having a contract signed, uh, with Lockton that doesn't begin until January one, so I wanted to explain a little bit about how we went about our stop-loss this year compared to years before. Willis actually did our stop-loss shopping for us and came forward in the first part of November with a proposal. Um, since we had Lockton, uh, we went ahead and got a broker of record, uh, the first part of November, which allowed them to renegotiate our stop-loss, which actually came in five percent less than what Willis's renegotiated rate would be, so a little bit less for us going forward with Lockton. And so, uh, Lockton also has a recommendation to, uh, provide a better product for us by going with different contract terms. So we have John Sims here tonight with Lockton, he is our, uh, team lead, um, and you will see a lot of John, uh, going forward with regards to what Lockton can do for our health fund, and, uh, perhaps seeing him, uh, present going forward with regards to some plans that we have with Lockton for next year. But any questions you have in regards to stop-loss, um, John's here with a small presentation if you wanna get into that, especially as it relates to moving to, from a twelve-fifteen contract term to a twenty-four-twelve.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, in the write-up that we have, um, the additional claim cost of six-hundred-and-six-hundred-thousand of five hundred and sixty-six dollars for nine high claimants, is that in addition to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar deductible that we would've had?
So it is in addition to, so that's really, if you wanna look at it from the standpoint of the reimbursement amount, that we will be getting. So, the four that hit the one-seventy-five, um, then the cost associated on top of that is what we would get reimbursed on, which is that six-hundred thousand.
What was last year's cost for the, um, stop-loss, stop-loss?
So last year's cost that you, um, were presented was based on a higher population, and it was at five-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, which is actually the renewal for Berkeley, at our current contract of twelve-fifteen.
So we're saving a little bit of money, but not much.
So what we're going, we are saving a little bit of money, but by moving to a twenty-four-twelve contract, we, we bumped that up about twenty-two thousand dollars, but it shores up that contract a little bit better for us, so we don't have any kind of stop-loss gap.
But I'm, I'm saying if we didn't have a stop-loss, we wouldn't be out that much.
Well, you, you gamble every year with regards to what that's gonna be, yes, sir.
Higher than normal claimants, right, nine?
Nine has been the highest we've seen so far, yes.
Right, and what I'm saying is, with stop-loss costing us over six-hundred thousand dollars, I mean, we've paid that out, whether we paid it to cover the claim, or we paid it for the stop-loss insurance.
Well, let me make sure I'm clear, so you're paying six-hundred thousand on the claims, you would pay in addition to that another six-hundred thousand, possibly if we did not have, uh, or more, uh, depending on their, their cost. Does that make sense?
No.
Okay. So you're paying all their claims cost with regards to that. So you're paying six-hundred thousand dollars now with regards to, um, high claimants and the cost associated with that. The dollar figures which could go into the millions would be what we would've been paying without the stop-loss. So it, it's protection for us from a standpoint of high claims. So you take those four claims, and if each one hit a million dollars, you'd be paying that.
Yes, but last year's numbers didn't bear that out.
No, sir.
Okay.
I don't know, John, if you...
Have we, have we ever had years?
Depends on whether we wanna take the risk or the insurance company takes the risk.
Have we ever had years that bore out that expense? How many?
Can you repeat your question?
Well, we talked about, how many years have we bore out an expense that great, and, and how often is this occurring? Becomes a numbers game.
Sure.
Okay. In prior years, I, I would say, maybe two, two fiscal years ago, I got, I'm going, I'm taking the reverse side of it, I got about one-point-two million dollars in stop-loss reimbursements. Without that, would've been out the premium plus to one-point-six. So we have exceeded the six-hundred thousand dollars, but every year, no, your point's taken, I understand. But what you're doing here is just minimizing risk. You're gonna pay six-hundred thousand dollars, or without the stop-loss, you're gonna pay the six-plus whatever extra premiums come with that. That's what you're looking at.
Just stabilizing your exposure.
Yeah, come on, come on up to the mic.
Okay, very good. Yeah.
Yeah, let's ma, let's make your trip worth it.
There you go, exactly. Uh, so stop-loss is, Gilbert and Cheryl both said the facts around it, it's something that you buy, it's kinda sleep insurance. Uh, you've got a self-funded program, you're self-funding up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars currently, uh, on any one claimant, that's per belly buttons covered under the plan, so you, you look at all the risks that's out there, it, it doesn't take too many huge claims, uh, before you're gonna make your money back, but let me point out the fact that stop-loss is not intended for you to win, 'cause if you win on that, then your underlying s, number of self-funded claim amounts that you have, you've self-funded, you're losing the bigger picture. Uh, so, it's like your car insurance, right? I mean, you, you buy your car insurance to protect your cash flow, legally, you have to have it, so ignore that, but just looking at the finances, looking at the finances of it, it makes perfect sense that for the city to protect themselves, at your size, you're not big enough from a consulting perspective to self-insure completely, there's just too much risk. And, and really with technology like it is today, uh, ironically, or, or surprisingly, mainly in the area of prescription drugs, the, the technology's expanding greatly where the frequency of these super-large claims, uh, is going up all the time. So your exposure from going without stop-loss, I, I just put it this way, I would strongly recommend you do not eliminate that. And then briefly, through, we, as an entity, we're placing a billion dollars of stop-loss insurance a year. And so from the marketing standpoint, we go out, we look at your contract details, but we're also looking at your large claimants. We have medical professionals on staff, M Ds, nurses, who are looking at your specific claims and projecting what we anticipate the risk to be in the following year. After that analysis, this go-around, we've looked at your specific data, and we anticipate that the hundred and seventy-five is still the place to be. We looked at two-hundred, looked at two-twenty-five, yes, you're lowering premium, but the potential exposure, given the known risk of current ongoing claimants, you'll end up losing in terms of additional exposure on those self-funded claims versus the savings in premium. So for this year, we're gonna market it every year, and so we're gonna come back to you every year and bring up suggestions about where you should be in terms of your contract, and that's coming from a medical perspective, as well as, uh, the leverage that we have to, uh, bring to the table in our negotiations because of the amount of premium that our firm is, is handling, so...
And, and ours is specific stop-loss.
Specific stop-loss, meaning...
Right, that it's claim individualized.
Right.
So, for the benefit of council, can you talk a little bit about the difference with aggregate stop-loss?
Yeah, the other form of protection, Jesus said it correctly, so you're insuring up to a hundred, or you self-insure up a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Anything above that is, that's why you buy the insurance. And your current contract is based on a twelve-fifteen, I'm trying not to get into too many details, but this is a detailed decision. So it's incurred, the current contract incurred claims in nineteen, but it has to be paid before the end of March of twenty in order for the insurance to protect you. So we're suggesting a twenty-four-twelve, which reaches back into this year, it eliminates that potential gap, because, again, there's hospital audits, there's interim billing that doesn't happen on a large claim, there's a host of reasons why a claim could be delayed later than March thirtieth before it's paid, and then you're, you don't have any coverage. So our, we eliminate the issue, the additional exposure, uh, on any of the large claimants, we've eliminated lasers, which is a whole other subject for a different day, so in terms of certain individuals being put at higher levels of insurance over the hundred and seventy-five, so we've eliminated all that, and we've protected you into twenty-one as well. So there's a, uh, a forty percent cap on the premium, which I know you think sounds high for twenty-one, there's no lasers they can put in in twenty-one, so we've vastly improved your plan at less money than the previous broker would've offered your coverage at out of the current contract. And then, sorry, Jesus, I went around the path here to get to your question. So the other level of protection that you can buy is all your self-funded claims, so all the, up to a hundred and seventy-five claims, you can buy protection on that as well. That's not something you have today, and that truly is for kinda, it's called aggregate stop-loss versus individual stop-loss.
Some communities have both?
Some have both, at your size, it's probably fifty-fifty.
Right.
The more conservative you are, the more you might wanna consider that.
And I think the size of funds plays a matter, for instance, in Kingsville, we had both, um, but it's a smaller, you know, pot of money, so too many high claims will, I mean, really blow you up.
Relatively smaller money, given the amount of premium involved, uh, for relatively smaller risk, and, and so, uh, again, fifty-fifty in terms of employers of your size that have that coverage, but I, I'm glad you brought it up, because it is something that if you are a conservative in nature, we would, you'd have to invest a few more dollars for that level of protection. But, I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, no, I think it's helpful, I mean, I, I think it's helpful to, over time, you know, provide education to everybody involved, 'cause it's a very important topic for employees.
Right. Right, exactly.
Well, you know, insurance is risk management. And, you know, you pay someone to take your risk for you. I remember, not on the subject of this type of insurance, but I was at a school board meeting, not in Victoria, several years ago, and they were discussing the deductible on their property insurance. And the comment around the table was, well, we haven't had a major storm in thirty, forty years. And so then, in less than six months, Harvey came. So when it comes, it can come really big.
That's right.
And so that's the only thing that I would caution. For me, we're dealing with the public's money and being a little conservative with it. I might gamble with my own money, but I'm not willing to gamble with the public's money from myself, my own perspective. So.
Can't do it in a game room, though?
Nope, not in a game room. So.
Any other questions? We can go through the presentation if you'd like, but the, that's kind of the, the heat of the matter, or the meat of the matter, I should say. Twenty-four, twelve is the recommendation. Shore up your contract, and we've done so at a reasonable price, given your current claim situation, your current size. And a hundred and seventy-five for your size group, there was a chart in there that talked about just your size group relative to the size deductible that employers are having and are use. And you're right where you should be in that regard as well. So-
And I do, if I may, I do want to give you and Lockton kudos because technically, they're not our company per se until 2020. And so they, they've stepped up to the plate, you know, before technically their contract starts with us to really help us through this process, because it was just something that we felt it was important to get them on board as soon as possible on. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And good discussion, and thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Boltknight. It's like we all, the more we educate ourselves, the better decisions we can make. Thank you again. Any further questions? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same say.
Great PowerPoint.
It's on the website, right?
Yes.
I guess it's item E3's pulled or passed?
Correct. Yeah. So we're gonna go straight into City Manager's report. And so first up, it's gonna be Joel. He'll be providing an update for Boot Fest.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, thank you all very much for having me this evening. This evening, I'm going to present the report on the Boot Fest 2019 festival, as well as the current financial status of the Boot Fest operating fund. The event was held on Friday and Saturday in October fourth through fifth in downtown Victoria. The event was held on Friday from six PM till eleven-thirty PM and Saturday from ten AM till eleven PM, which has the schedule that we've held for the past several years. The goals for Boot Fest: to increase overnight hotel stays and other economic benefits for the city, to hold the city's signature festival in downtown Victoria, and to provide for a safe, high-quality customer experience for citizens and overnight attendees by providing free music, entertainment, and for all social, economic groups of the city. The city did use hot funds from the Boot Fest program fund balance for the Boot Fest 2019 program. As mentioned before, in up here, the hot funds can only be spent to increase overnight hotel stays in Victoria. Just a recap on some of the programs for Boot Fest. We did have sixteen performing acts on the main stage in gazebo. We did have a number of activities in the kids' corral, as well as acts and performances. The car show had a really huge turnout this year, over a hundred and seventeen entries, which is one of the largest we've seen in several years. The Boot Fest 5K did well at two hundred and eighteen registrations. And the washers tournament at twenty-three teams, we capped that at twenty-five, so it was nearly full. And we were very pleased to have the Clean Core International Fireworks Spectacular return for the Boot Fest 2019 event. Food vendors, we did have twenty food vendors filling twenty-one spaces. The, on average, they reported that they grossed between twenty-five-hundred and five thousand sales. Merchandise vendors, we had thirty-seven filling fifty spaces. Again, some of those, like with one of that one food vendor, they do apply for two spaces and are granted that dependent upon their application. And that does come with an increased fee. And then they averaged between one thousand and twenty-five-hundred in sales per vendor. We do, did provide the free shuttlebus service again per, from elegant limousine and charter. That did go to downtown Victoria from the Riverside Stadium parking lot that ran throughout the entire course of the event. There are some times where we have more buses than others, just dependent upon the attendance at Boot Fest. And the ridership for this year was at one thousand three hundred and ninety-seven.
Is, is that a significant cost? Because while personally, I really enjoy that, it doesn't look like that many people use it.
It is, it is an appreciable cost. That cost is around seventy-nine hundred for the two days of the event to provide that transportation service. In local support, we did receive fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollar, seven hundred and eleven dollars, excuse me, in cash sponsorships. In-kind sponsorships, which does include the Clean Core International Fireworks Spectacular, was at eighty-one thousand five hundred. And our volunteers, who were very appreciative for the event, did fill four hundred and fifty-nine spots. And we have been voted as the best festival by Victoria Advocate Readers for seven years now. So our, been going strong there and very pleased by that support. Our hotel occupancy for the weekend was rather healthy. You can see the Boot Fest weekend there. And we did pretty well in terms of our occupancy compared to the year before. We did have about a nine percent increase on Friday from the year before and about a thirteen and a half percent increase from the year before on Saturday for the Boot Fest weekend. In conjunction with Boot Fest, Victoria Parks and Rec works with Coward Sports Events to have a fast-pitch tournament at the youth sports complex. Part of a way to market that tournament by tournament management is to promote Boot Fest, to tell the teams that there is a free event, free entertainment for their, for their kids. Did very well this year. Again, thirty-three non-local teams, six local teams for a total of thirty-nine. And that, by Parks and Rec's projections, produced three hundred and eleven root nights. Getting to the attendance for Boot Fest, just a few things to note. Victoria County Office of Emergency Management has, as have every year, did provide for the crowd counts. New for 2019 was high-definition drone footage. In my conversations with Mr. McBrier and Ms. West, it is, to their opinion, that is the most accurate crowd counts, we, crowd counts that we've ever had, in that they could actually zoom in and count heads. That's how high the definition was from this drone footage. In the attendance at peak on October fourth, twenty-two hundred to twenty-four hundred was observed. And again, just going to that accuracy, usually when we've reported these ranges at our council presentation, the range has been one thousand to two thousand difference between those numbers. Now we're down to the hundreds. So on Saturday at nine PM, the peak attendance observed, you can see fifty-three hundred to fifty-five hundred estimated from that drone footage for a total Boot Fest attendance of seventy-five hundred to seventy-nine hundred. Some comparison, to Boot Fest 2018, we were a little lower on Friday night, thirty-seven fifty to forty-seven fifty compared to twenty-two hundred to twenty-four hundred. And then on Saturday night, we were a little higher this year, thirty-two fifty to forty-two fifty as compared to fifty-three hundred to fifty-five hundred. We did have some, some great weather on Saturday at Boot Fest this year as compared to the year before, if you recall the rain. So we were lucky in that regard. Just some images of the high-definition drone footage that you see. That's the Friday night, peak time. You see the twenty-two hundred and just a resolution that the Victoria County Office of Emergency Management was able to obtain. Going to Saturday, here's some images from that crowd. And there is at nine PM, peak time, observed in front of the main stage. Just some background before we get to the status of the Boot Fest operating fund and the financial performance of Boot Fest 2019. The city of Victoria took over the CVB operations from the Chamber of Commerce in August of 2011, which included the first year of the Boot Fest program. The Boot Fest 2019 event was the ninth anniversary of the event. And the Boot Fest program is funded over two fiscal years. Because the event takes place the first weekend in October, for instance, the Boot Fest 2019 event partially was funded in the fiscal year nineteen budget, as well as the fiscal year twenty budget. The city overtime reimbursement started in Boot Fest 2013 to achieve more transparency. Up until then, for the first two years, overtime was funded out of the department's respective funds. So now those overtime figures since 2013 have been attributed to Boot Fest. The Boot Fest 2016 program was the last year to receive the transfer from the hot fund. The fund balance at that point had built to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. So the perception at the time was that was enough to fund several Boot Fest programs. And looking at the Boot Fest 2019 revenue versus the 2019 expenses, the final inch, financial impact was a negative a hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. With a beginning balance of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, the current Boot Fest balance stands at negative two thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. What this means is to continue with Boot Fest, a funding source must be established. And we've got three slides to break down coming up here next about kind of the Boot Fest financial fund and where we're at at this point. If you see the 2017 Boot Fest actuals, that was that number I alluded to, the two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. That was what was left in the reserve fund when the hundred thousand dollar hot funds allotment was discontinued temporarily. If you see the total revenue that year versus the expenditures, that was a loss of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine. That brought the fund down to a hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three. You have your beginning fund balance for Boot Fest 2018 at that. After the Boot Fest 2018 event, it brought it down to one twelve, six, sixty-nine. And then you see the 2019 actuals, which have led us to that negative two thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollar balance in the Boot Fest operating fund. And looking at the Boot Fest 2019 budget versus the actuals, a big hit to us this year was the overtime, as well as some equipment, commercial rental increases. We did have to provide for our golf carts for the first time. We had originally, usually had gotten those for free via sponsorship. There were some increases to stage, sound, and lighting. So with that, we have, are at that negative two thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Basically, what going forward, what staff is recommending, if council wishes to move forward with the event at the current level of current, you know, adequate staffing, the entertainment value, the entertainment value, the staffing, as well as the security, everything like that, we would be looking at this next slide here. And that, in the January seventh meeting coming up, is that we would submit a budget amendment of fifty thousand dollars from the hotel occupancy tax fund. That would create a working Boot Fest fund of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. And looking, and myself and Finance Director Gilbert Rayner have worked on these numbers. Looking at our, you know, actualized revenues, currently where we're kind of standing, we're pretty comfortable with that being the case in terms of our street vendor fees, private donations, beverage sales, and miscellaneous program fees. If we want to keep providing that event at the same level, we would also be looking at in presenting in fiscal year twenty-one, the return of the hundred thousand dollar transfer from the hotel occupancy tax fund, which would then create a working fund of that forty-seven fifteen basically going forward, to try to do our best to not build up that fund as it had in years past. That is what, you know, we'd be looking at to, to continue the event. Also going forward, to look at having the CVB director approve all expenditures from Boot Fest, so we can see, working with department heads and everyone to see how we can make sure our overtime numbers are, can be properly anticipated, to know how that'll affect other aspects of the festival, and to basically continue presenting the event at its current iteration, if you will. So that is my report on the Boot Fest 2019 event, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Could you, again, tell me why the overtime was so much more? We didn't add another night, so.
Yes. And Gilbert, if, in our discussions, from what I understood, that, and, and that's where Councilman Ball and I alluded to, working with some of the department heads in terms of planning the staffing. From what I understand is that, especially in regards to some security, there were some city Victoria staff that needed to be, that were off-duty, that needed to be applied to the Boot Fest. That impacted the overtime amounts. And that was a bit, bit of a surprise. So, you know, working through the CVB director, working closely with all departments to anticipate those overtime funds more accurately going forward.
I think one of the, the ongoing challenge, growing challenge, I think, you all could correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have what we call critical shifts, which are, you know, your seven PM to when it closes, right? When it's like the bulk of the music, that it's hard to find, to fill with volunteers. That every year gets harder and harder to fill those critical shifts with volunteers, even our own staff volunteers. And so I think part of this increased expense is also the fact that we have employees that take up these critical shifts and are compensated for it. Correct? And so that also is contributing to the increase in, in overtime, is that every year, it gets harder to find volunteers for their critical shifts, and we're literally paying staff to work them.
Is that, I mean, what's the percentage of the increase in the overtime? What's so different, besides the volunteers, between 2018 and 2019 that necessitated so much more overtime? Did we add positions? Did we?
I think it's a combination of several factors. You know, I really, truly do wish that we could have a very, very specific black and white response to you, but I think that goes back to the fact that currently it's, maybe decentralized, not the proper word, but, you know, we, oftentimes, we don't really figure out what those costs are until after the fact, as opposed to being proactive with it, to get a better handle over some of this thing. I mean, unless you all have a black and white answer to that question. But I think it's been hard to figure that out just because of the different variables.
That's correct.
To put it in perspective, if you do the math, the loss versus the people that attended, it amounts to the city basically covering the ticket of a little under fifteen dollars per person that attended. That's what that hundred and fifteen, roughly thousand, divided by seventy-nine hundred amounts to.
Yes, sir.
Right, but I just thought we had enough history running the thing not to be caught off-guard with some of this. It's a pretty big jump to me to knowing that we're gonna lose seventy-seven thousand and go to a hundred and fifteen plus.
Right.
And, you know, what changed?
I think it's a-
I can see stage rentals going up.
I think, I, I think what we're missing here is also the decrease in the sponsorships that have contributed to the delta overall, if we really want to compare. Because what, we're, we're, haven't those decreased?
Those have decreases, yes. If you're looking in years past, we were, you know, had some large sponsors who were alcohol-based sponsors. We were unable to secure those going forward due to a TABC ruling several years ago. That was without a doubt our biggest sponsor. I know Thomas and I worked on that.
How much money would you all say that decreased?
That sponsorship was, that was a fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship.
So that's not coming back?
As it stands currently with TABC, no. We would have to figure out some other way to figure out how to structure that in, but they would not approve that sponsorship.
There's also a thirty or-
I know that doesn't answer all your question, but just big picture, I think that's played a role in the variance.
And we did have some smaller decreases in terms of revenue, street vendor fees. We did reduce the number of vendors. Based on vendor feedback, we did have a number of food vendors that were on Forest Street for the past few years. They never did very well. Their complaints became continual, and we thought for the best of their business interests that we kind of cut back on our vendor amounts. And I think our vendors were, from what I understand, pretty happy with their performance this year.
There's a thirty or forty thousand dollar decrease in beer and margarita sales from 2017 to 2019. And that's, to some extent, the numbers that we're talking about. It's sort of an offset for the, for the overtime and so forth. And if we started by putting two hundred and fifty-nine thousand in, in exchange for- And if we started by putting 259,000 in in exchange for not putting in the 100,000, and you stretch that over three years, essentially, the 100,000 a year, a little bit less is put in, I mean, these numbers all do come out at the same same spot.
Yes, ma'am.
And then on your goals for Boot Fest, you had three of them there. Goals are always measurable, right? So you can determine if you met your goal or not. So, like you said, we had a 9% increase on Friday and 13% increase on Saturday for overnight hotel stays. What's your goal?
Well.
That's your actual, what's your goal?
We did attribute 84 rooms to our actual Boot Fest rates goal.
What's your percent increase that you're shooting for?
I don't have that established at this time, Mr. Councilman Ball Knight.
Okay, well, we should, I mean, let's set a goal for if we're trying to increase hotel stays, what are we shooting for? And how are we going to get to that goal? I mean, it's a, it's a good product to have, but I don't, and some of these, if they're going to be goals, they need to be measurable to me, just to make sure we're doing it right and we're hitting what we need, because I do worry with such an increase in the loss, and that's what's driving my questions tonight, is that, you know, at ninth year into the festival, we shouldn't be surprised like this.
My question is on the 311 rooms that you said that were booked. Those were attributed to the fast pitch tournament. That wasn't necessarily people, they were coming just for the Boot Fest. So there should be another number added to that for the people that came for Boot Fest, not including the bands members.
Yeah.
Okay, so there should be a higher percentage than this.
Yes, well, the, I mentioned what we did with the special rates for our area hotels, and they did report 84 room nights. That's not including the entertainers that we bring in for Boot Fest. That's not included in the report.
Right, because doesn't the rule say that if we pay for the rooms, we can't count them?
We do not report those.
Okay.
So then on the safe, safety goal, how'd we do on that? I mean, see anything, I mean, did we? How's the rest or citations issued compared to last year, to this year?
I'm not aware of any major incidents, but we could establish, establish that as a metric going forward in terms of citations, arrests, that kind of thing. It's, we'd have to figure out a method for seeing if that's how we attribute that directly to Boot Fest.
Well, I mean, you have it as, just because it's as a goal, is the reason I'm asking. And, I mean, I'm sure, we have a goal of providing this safe, high-quality customer experience. Attendance is a good one for looking at the quality, right? People responding to the band selections, but how do we know it's safe? I didn't see anything in here that said it was a safe festival, but that's.
Fair enough. We could look at incorporating some of that in a future presentation.
And I'm not saying that it wasn't safe, don't get me wrong. I think it was very safe, and I let my kids run around all the time on that, at that festival, so it's not that, it's just like if we're going to put it down, let's get a report out on it.
Chief could always speak to that off the cuff, you know, tonight, if you're interested in hearing about that, he could tell you about the story where he almost arrested somebody a few years ago, or broke up a fight. No, that's what it was, right?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager, Guards. Yes, you're correct. Couple of years ago, I leaped into action and in an attempt to save the victim and, you know, and capture the suspect, I ended up capturing the victim, so. I learned a lesson, you leave police work to the, to the gentlemen that know what they're doing a little bit more when they're chasing people. In my opinion, the festival is very safe. We do deploy pretty heavily with that sense, because we want people to not only be safe, but have the perception that they are safe, and they are. We did have one arrest, one individual that was arrested for public intoxication, and that's typically been for the last three years, if memory serves, we usually have at least one or so that talked themselves into going to jail, so. But generally speaking, the festival is very safe.
And I concur with that, it's just I think we need to quantify it.
Yes.
Fair enough, we can definitely do that.
Well.
Thank you, Chief.
Along the lines of high quality, you know, we're talking about safety and talking about the amenities that the city provided, and I just can't thank you enough for the trashcans every 10 feet. I mean, you had no choice but to find a trashcan, but it was, it really helps. People use those, and it keeps the entire appearance very good through the whole festival. I'm sure it makes it a little easier to clean up as well, but, you know, people will do the right thing if you give them the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Scott. And I want to just note that, you know, it is a true city effort. We have a Boot Fest committee that involve multiple department heads, assistant directors, and we meet regularly, and so there are a lot of departments who are involved, so, you know, we just want to thank all of those departments who are involved so heavily in Boot Fest. There's a lot of great teamwork that goes into it.
I would.
I'm sorry?
I said I would recommend or acknowledge the city, they do clean up downtown very quickly afterwards. Sunday is pristine down here, so kudos. Thank you. I do think that we probably need to have a discussion. I've sat up here for six-plus years and have seen, I've always been a supporter, but seeing the fund balance drop, and, and I don't expect to come even, there's a lot of people out there in the public that want a revenue-neutral, at least, event, but I do have concerns that it's continuing to cost, and we may have to look at options to fund whether some of the other festivals around, whether they charge, just things for discussion, I think, to make this viable.
And if council would like us to explore that direction, we can definitely look at what an ambition-based model, if they would like to propose that we do that. We would note that for, you know, with planning and the way of everything for this next year for Boot Fest 20, because I'll note that, you know, I'm already pricing music acts and things like that, and our vendors are kind of, you know, wondering when, you know, when are the applications going to come out? So to develop, you know, what an admission-based model might look like in a well-put-together plan would definitely take some time, so, you know, for this next Boot Fest, if council would like to continue with this festival, we would recommend that, what I presented here tonight and will present later, but we can absolutely look into, put together what that might look like.
I think that information would be helpful.
Sure.
Is there any way to get public input back on the public's perception of the event? Because after all, it's the public's money, and if they choose to, they want to party with their own money, then it's our duty to make sure we do it in a reasonable manner, but, and in the end of the day, it is their money. And like I said, it amounts to $15 per person if the 7,900 dollar, 7,900 count is correct. So I think there's a lot of work to do and a lot of, and it seems like you all have a pretty good handle on what we need to look into, and I look forward to further reports on it.
And Mr. Mayor, I would say that, hey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the 7,900 is still pretty conservative, because you don't take into account afternoon, kids, families out there, do you?
The 7,900, on the, oh, on the attendance.
Correct.
Yes, yes, Councilman. No, no, those are taken at, those are peak counts.
Okay.
So there may be, yes, there may be people who come during the day on Saturday and go back home.
Right, and then there might be ways to have better counts in the future, you know, funneling people through certain areas and literally have people with counters, you know, I mean, there are different things that could be done differently to have better, more accurate counts.
May I suggest that we have more variety of the bands and something that doesn't cost as much as it does? If you could look at some of the bands, there's people that you can call, I can give you some contacts.
Great.
There's some people that want to come to Victoria, but, you know, they're not quite, you know, they're on the way up. They're good, but they need to have exposure.
I would definitely be eager to hear your feedback, Councilwoman Leece, thank you.
Any further questions? I think we're going to hear about Tech Dot.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to circle back and provide an update on where we stand with the Tech Dot overpass project fund balance. You've heard us talk about this for half a year, about how we've been working with Tech Dot to get some of those funds. And so today, I'm going to walk you through a refresher of that timeline and then start talking about our recommendation on how to allocate those funds. Where am I pointing? There we go. And so this slide, in essence, represents some of the history, literally going back all the way to 2011, that's when the original agreement was executed between the city and Tech Dot, leading up to the most recent action, which council voted on at the last council meeting or two council meetings ago, which was literally to approve the resolution for redemption of some of those outstanding maturities. In that time span, you may recall that the setup of the agreement was that Tech Dot would give us an amount on an annual basis, and so would the county, to reimburse us for, or to help pay the debt service on the payment for, for the loop. And so when we brought this forward to council, we talked about this payoff amount of 9.6 million dollars and how that would actually be, create a fund balance for us that we would be able to use for other projects. You've heard us talk through the budget process about allocating some of that to our health insurance fund. You heard me mention that we would use some of these funds for, to advance the Lone Tree Acres Drainage and Street Project, for instance, and so we'll run through that here shortly. This is just a summary of where we stand with the funds after those things that I mentioned, which was the transfer, transfer to the health fund that I mentioned, that we talked about during the budget. You may or may not recall that through this source of funds is where we fund the annual payment to the O P E B, which that has four years left, and so we finished that original payment schedule in 2024. There was an item on the agenda earlier today that we were going to talk about this traffic signal project, but this is the source of funds that had been talked about using as that upfront expense for that traffic signalization project, and then ultimately, when the federal highway reimburses the 80%, it would go into this fund. I mentioned that on the positive side, we also get some money from the county, which equates to about $292,000. They also have four payments left on that, and so that also ends in 2024. And of course, there's interest income there as well. So ultimately, that puts us as a, at a potential fund balance of 6.7 million dollars, which is a good pot of money to work from, right? So what I'd like to start a conversation on is how to use some of these funds. There's been some projects that have been talked about that this fund kind of lends itself to be useful for that purpose. One of the things that I do want to add a caveat to that is that because these are funds that are coming from an outside source, we, of course, do not want to use these funds for operational expenditures, you know, we don't want to use them for salaries, we don't want to use them for any recurring expense. So we want to make sure that, for the most part, we use them for one-time expenditures. And so I've mentioned the Lone Tree Acres Street and Drainage Project, we have allocated potentially up to $4 million for that. That's important, because I think that's consistent with the priorities set forth by council, that at the end of the day, your big priority is drainage and street improvements. And so we've reflected that by representing that 4 million out of the 6.7 be spent for streets and drainage. And if we add on the H U B cul-de-sac project, which is also a street-related project, then you'd be looking at 4.5 out of the 6.7 that are, we're recommending earmarking towards street and drainage. That, of course, leaves us a little bit of money to use for other sources, and on Friday, we briefly discussed some of these. On Friday, we, of course, reconfirmed with you the priorities set forth by the comp plan in 2035. We also shared with you some of our priorities from staff as it relates to compensation, to some of the facility needs that our organization has. And so we figured, well, why not? Let's just set these funds aside so that we don't have to worry, so to speak, about allocating funds for these exercises over the next three fiscal year budget cycles. We already have them in a pot of money, ready for us to be utilized. And so I want to kind of list them out. So we briefly talked about the need to go through a classification and compensation plan study to really help us understand where we stand in comparison to some of our counterparts, but more importantly, create better equity across our organization. Our current plan was developed in the 80s, and so there's some structural challenges there that makes it a little bit difficult for us to create better equity across the organization. You've heard me verbalize that doing across-the-board cost-of-living adjustments don't really fix anything, because if there's disparity within the organization in compensation, all you're moving is moving that disparity further up. And so really, what we need is a very robust plan that comes in and helps us figure some, figure that out, so that we can actually come before you with solutions. We could sit here all day talking about how we, you know, are not pleased with our compensation structure, but unless we actually have solutions to discuss, it makes it very difficult to progress in that regard. So we think that's something that we want to proceed with. We talked about the need for a Parks Master Plan and how we really haven't had one in a while, and of course, you confirmed that quality of life and parks and recreation is a big priority for us. We talked about Riverside Park and how that's specifically identified in the 2035 comp plan, and so we want to make sure that we allocate those funds for Parks Master Plan now, so that when we get ready to do it, those funds are there. On top of that, we want to set aside an amount of money to focus on park improvements, and so we're recommending that 1.5 million dollars is set aside for park enhancements of amenities as recommended in the comprehensive plan. I know that there has already been conversations about us looking at partnering with a local nonprofit that's willing to donate some funds for another splash pad, but it may or may not be sufficient money, and so this would allow us the ability to have some funds. There's been conversations about a dog park, so this would provide us an opportunity to explore that option, to be determined on how much money we might need to address the duck pond at Riverside Park. I mean, as you know, that's something that has been shut down since earlier this year. And so there is a need for us to have a pot of money that we could play with for parks to match grants or just do some of these projects as they come up. Going back to the plans, we've talked about the importance of downtown and the fact that that needs to go through its own separate plan to engage the stakeholders, especially as a city increases its involvement with downtown, with Main Street now on board and under the city, it makes sense for us to spearhead that effort. The fiscal sustainability assessment that I mentioned on there is really a phase one of a development code review. One of the things that we talked about on Friday was, was that we need help educating you, the stakeholders, the community, everybody, on the need to reassess our development code. But a really good phase one is taking that development code and realizing the financial impacts that it has on the delivery of services. So for example, our, our code might require for there to be, you know, in a new neighborhood, a road that's this wide, but have we ever thought about what that long-term cost is to maintain that street in compared to the code? Have we ever really consciously thought about the size of developments? You know, we briefly talked about smaller lots needed on certain parts of town. Well, let's see it from the eyes of finances, right? Do smaller lots produce more property tax than larger lots? Maybe, maybe not. Would that impact the way that we have a conversation about our code? Maybe, maybe not. And so there's, there's a direct tie with long-term financial sustainability in the code that is a proper phase one approach. Other cities have done it that way, City of Brownsville, City of Bastrop, other cities that have gone through a development code review have gone through this fiscal sustainability assessment first as a way to help educate everybody on the importance of having a code that is reflective of money conscious and being conscious of that. I know some of you had the, had the pleasure to sit through a presentation from the company that provides that service, and so you, you know exactly what I'm referring to. There is a very specific company that sole sources this, this product, and they're making waves across the profession, and I know some of you have been exposed to them, but that's a recommended phase one. And then, of course, phase two would come in and require a development code review. We've talked about the importance of engaging the stakeholders through that process as well, which is something that a third party would have to help us with. Internally, we've also talked about the need to address our facilities. We have a lot of deferred maintenance challenges with our facilities, and it's important that we get a handle around what those challenges are, because again, it's impossible for us to have a conversation about being proactive with our facilities, and we don't even know the extent of the challenges that are ahead of us, and we don't really have a good understanding of the spatial needs, for instance, that our departments have with the visions that we have for them. Things are changing, right? And so are our facilities changing with that? And so those are big conversations, those are big questions that need to be answered and looked at. So all of that may or may not cost $750,000. You know, I'm not suggesting that, you know, we've actually priced all of these out individually, but the idea is to give us a starting point so that we can start tackling these, and we've already started doing it. We already have some funds in the budget for fiscal year 20 for the streets assessment that's already in the works, that was approved by council last month, and we already have some funds for a drainage master plan to take place during 2020 as well. So this idea about us being proactive, taking a step back to reassess our needs, is already ongoing, and so I want to provide an opportunity for us to have the funds to continue that same mindset. On the drainage master plan, though, I will clarify too, that the conversation that we had on Friday was really helpful to us, because it really helps us fine-tune what we would like that drainage master plan to focus on. It was very evident that council is very interested in. was very evident that Council is very interested in looking at how we can make land more developable in our community. And we realized that drainage plays a big role in that. And so we can make that drainage plan very specific, so that as we hire our consultant to come in and help us, they can focus on projects like that. And we also know from a, and Public Works know from a professional standpoint, that we also have deferred maintenance challenges with our stormwater system, right? You know, we have concrete, concrete ditches, for instance, that are throughout our community, that, you know, Dero's group does a good job of cleaning up. But we aren't, we aren't having conversation about how are we going to pay when that needs to be replaced. And so, you know, there are existing stormwater infrastructures that we could do better planning for, so that it's not something that we wait until, you know, it collapses or something drastic happens. And so that we can include in the drainage master plan. Now, I do have a very specific recommendation on at least how to tackle some of these for the next, for, for the foreseeable future. Again, some of these are ongoing. I mentioned the street condition assessment is in progress. Staff is prepared, assuming that Council is supportive, staff is prepared to bring forward a recommendation on awarding, on awarding a contract for the classification and compensation plan study in January, so that we can really try and, I don't want to use the word rush, but ideally, for, for, for me, as we have conversations on the 2021 budget, I'd like to have some of that information for the summer. I'd like to be able to, in the summer, us know, how much money would it take to do a phase one, for instance, of getting us on the right track as it relates to compensation? So the sooner that we start that, the better. I think it's important for us to start the phase one for the development code review. That doesn't necessitate public engagement, and that's important, because the drainage master plan will. And so one of the things that we need to be conscious of when we're going through our different master plans is the master plans that will take up staff time versus public time, because what we also don't want to create is sort of involvement fatigue from the public, right? We can't necessarily throw up at them a bunch of different master plans, asking them to participate in a bunch of surveys at the same time or a bunch of public meetings. And so we need to be cognizant of having a good balance between master plans that will necessitate public engagement versus the ones that are just operational for us. And so this is the recommended approach for 2020. And then as we go through the budget process for 2021, we can have conversations about how it makes sense to tackle 2021. But hopefully, if there's support on allocating these funds, at that point, the conversation is solely about timeline and not so much, where's the money going to come from? Because we've already proactively set aside the money for the things in the box, right? As was discussed on Friday. And so really, that's, that's all that I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to this. This, of course, isn't an action item, but may or may not necessitate bringing forward budget amendments, Gilbert. I'm not sure. So.
This is your list, and it's a great list. And I'm looking at big numbers, and so I'm starting to think about other things we've been, we've talked about. The indoor firing range, what was the cost of that? Does anybody know?
It was like $9 million.
$9 million? Okay.
So that, that, that part is part of the facility assessment. And so I guess, let me, let me rephrase. We've already gone through that assessment, right? There was a company that was hired a few years ago to come in and look at the spatial needs and the growth patterns of police and fire and recommended, you know, a public safety headquarter building where the city bought some land for it. But what that exercise failed to do was assess, well, what happens after that, right? If PD vacates the area here, on site here, what happens to the buildings here? Do they get demolished? Do we build something new? Does it create an opportunity for us to remodel them and move other departments here, right? And so, and if we did that, what happens to 700 Main? And so, you know, there is more holistic conversations that need to be had as it relates to facility needs, that that specific assessment will help us with. At the same time that we need to have honest, realistic conversations about all of these projects and realize that, that we need to be money conscious first, right? And so while having a $9 million indoor firing range might be on a wish list, you know, how, how, how does that kind of compare with our other needs? And maybe instead of a $9 million shooting range, maybe it's a five, or a four, or a three, or whatever it ends up being, right? And so it's difficult to have that conversation without knowing what else is needed. Now, we don't have the $9 million today anyway. So, you know.
We have six and a half.
I think you're, I think you can have some money you can donate, right?
I'll have to check. It's Christmas.
Okay.
Might be tapped out.
I think they're all excellent projects. I have a question about where are we with the HEB cul-de-sac thing? Where, what does HEB say?
A great question. So as, as, if you may recall, the, the staff recommendation that was brought forward a couple of months ago was to do a cul-de-sac option. And I, I guess we kept it as that in this slide.
I want to, I want to correct it.
Oh, yes, sir.
There were two options that were presented, right? And I'm sorry, the paper keeps getting wrong. Both options were approved by city engineers, state planners.
Correct.
Okay. So it keeps getting stated that there was only one option that was recommended by the city. There were two, and were both were approved by state and the city.
Sure. Fair enough. But I think it's also safe to say that staff, out of those two, staff had a recommendation. And so I think maybe it's just in how it's worded, but, but you're right. There was, there was two recommendations or options, as a better word, that were brought forward with the one particular staff recommendation. And maybe we could have communicated that better at the time.
And as I recall, y'all's, y'all's preferred option was based on what HEB preferred and some fiscal.
Sure.
Dollars attached to it, right?
I think, I think it was several, I think it was several factors. And I think, you know, and I'll take that, I think we could have communicated that a little bit better, because I agree that maybe it did come across as, you know, that option was recommended because of HEB. And while certainly it was a factor, it's also wrong to say that that was the only factor, because there were several factors in, in that. Cost was, was a big one, right? I mean, it's, let's, let's be real, right? That, that's a reality for us with everything that we do. We want to be money conscious. And not only is the funding part, but also the level of complexity with the project, right? And so there was an opportunity with, with the preferred option to, I think we were going to do some type of land swap of some sort, that wouldn't necessitate us acquiring property, which makes it less complicated, versus the second option, which was ultimately the one that receives support from Council through a resolution, is more complicated. And not, it's more expensive, more complicated, and wasn't necessarily HEB's preferred option either, simply because of the complications involved with it. Not because they were against it, because they're not. They're not saying like, you know, we don't want to do this at all, but they're just simply saying, okay, this is more complicated. This is going to take longer. We need more work done. And because more work is done, we at the city have taken the position that because of the additional work that's needed, we need to engage some other outside help to help us figure some of those specifics out. Ken and his staff have done a really good job of the conceptual plans, which some of that was presented to you, and coming up with some cost estimates, which we presented to you. But at the, at the end of the day, somebody needs to design it. Somebody needs to work with Tech dot, with HEB. And in light of everything that we have going on in our engineering department, we've determined that we need to outsource that. And so we're at that stage right now where we're contemplating outsourcing that work. Because keep in mind that one of the biggest differences, which makes an impact on the level of service in the design, is the fact that now it might, it'll have through traffic, right? And so before with the, or with the cul-de-sac option, I should say, there was no need to worry about through traffic. But with the alternative option, we have to worry about through traffic. We need to worry about the curves. We need to worry about the, you know, there's, it's just more work than what was originally anticipated.
Yes.
And so where we stand with it is that we're still working through that. We're still working through that additional work that's needed.
But I think that, just to go back, that option solves some of the unintended consequences of the simplistic preferred option.
Yeah, it's fair to say.
I want to comment, though, that at that meeting, one of the things that really persuaded me was some discussion that we had about the train and the intersection and being blocked. Well, since that night, I've seen trains block that intersection several times. There's nobody taking stolts. I'm not as convinced as I was that a cul-de-sac wouldn't be a viable solution, because it, that was the thing that persuaded me in what would, why we needed to keep stolts open. And cars just sit there, and like I said, nobody takes them. So I'm, I'm reconsidering.
I think the whole concept for me is that you'd brought up a point, a meeting or two before, I think, Mr. Bognight, about when we approve these things to move forward on somewhat ill-defined, where we don't know the final answer. And we had discussions about, well, we can always move in that direction to get more information. And from my perspective, that's what I thought we were doing, is to prove that, to get more information. If there's complicating things involved in this, that obviously you're, you're, you're seeing and you're conveying to us, I have no problem with bringing a report back to us and finding out where you are in the process. Like the question you just asked, Ms. Scott, about that intersection, is there something that could be done up there, even to put signs up or say, don't block the intersection? But I have no qualms in bringing it back to us as a report of where we are in the process. And, and until the final, until we approve a final number and a deal, it's never approved. So I, I wouldn't be objective to an interim report of where we are at our first meeting in January, so that you can inform us of these complexities that you're, you're mentioning tonight.
Sure, absolutely. We can definitely prepare for that. I'll, keep in mind, too, that because it was a resolution that Council approved, that if Council does want to consider potentially changing the option that was approved through that resolution, it would have to come in the form of another resolution, an action item. And so it would be helpful for us to know exactly what you'd like for us to bring back. Just the update, or the update with the potential to reconsider the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Updates are fine with me. I haven't seen anything that's changed my mind, so.
Updates, fine. It'll be two, two more weeks after that, if there's, if there's a change in direction. But, you know, I have no, no problems with discussion. I think that's what we're here for. And I think we better, the better we understand the situation. And I'm interested to know what complexities are, are in the way and that have changed since, since we talked about it last time. I think we were all hearing more about it. But I do think there are some misconceptions, because the notion that, that Tech dot approved this or not, I can tell you, the only thing Tech dot's worried about is that intersection. They, they don't care anything about Stone Street. I mean, that, that's the fact. So I think the more we can clarify the situation, I would say, bring back a report for the next meeting, is, is what I would like.
We're still on track.
And then, then if we determine we need more information, we could always say, bring back a resolution. Because I don't think that either one of the directions is going to make a difference in years in the overall project that has been stated, to do one or the other.
Sure. Got it. Any other questions related to anything else on?
Would you expand a little bit on the Lone Tree Acres Street and Drainage Project?
Sure. So you may recall from the CIP conversation, I guess earlier in the summer, that in that plan, it called for Lone Tree Acres subdivision to have its streets addressed. I think it was 2022 or '23. It was, it was an outer year. I'm sorry? Yeah, 2023. And so one of the reasons why it was in 2023 was because in Donald's internal plan, that would give staff the ability to address the drainage issue over the next two or three years, so that as the street gets fixed in 2023, it's not undone with the water flowing through the street as it is now. And so through that conversation, there was some interest from Councilmember Lofgren and others for us to look at some of these streets that really need help. And so this was one of those projects that we just identified, that we might have the money to be able to address the drainage in the street at the same time. And that's what we are rolling with.
And this is also an area where the buses, school buses have extreme difficulty?
Correct. Yes, sir. Yeah. And this is also geographically located near the area that we've been talking about, where Cypress Grove and some of that area. Now, this specific drainage improvement that's in this budget, it wouldn't necessarily address that issue, but geographically, so everybody's aware where we're talking about, it's close by.
So then this would free up the expense in 2023 or '24 for something else?
Yes.
Well, I mean, technically, yes, because this was removed from that plan. Yeah, so there was no need for Lone Tree to be in the 2023 plan.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the city manager reports and takes us to an executive session item. And before I read the announcement for the executive session that we recess, I do want to make sure Council was aware, and the public is aware, that we, that staff will be presenting an item for Council consideration after the executive session. So we will not adjourn from executive session the way we normally do. We will return here to the dais for one additional item. And so now, Mayor, the city council will recess for executive session on the 17th day of December 2019 at 7:05 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interests due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party. Thank you.
Now recess. Mr. Gush, could you give me the time for bringing us back into open session?
It is now 7:32.
We're now reconvened.
So there is one item remaining on the agenda tonight, and that is item H2, a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a real estate sales contract for the sale of city-owned property and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion as second to approve item H2. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Seeing no other business reports tonight, I will adjourn.
Thank you.